Everyone take your seats, please.
How's it going?
How you doing?
Good, brother. Nice blue. Nice jeans.
Suzanne.
Yeah.
You bring a hush to the crowd.
Isn't it nice? Isn't it nice? I wish I got that kind of respect. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting. You order, will everyone rise now, please? And today, the invocation will be done by Pastor Steve Gill. Pastor?
Would you join me? Father God, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the privilege of living in a country that is free, in a community that we love. And, Lord, we just say, thank you tonight. We're grateful for men and women who have given their lives so we can actually be in a place like this, because we know there's parts of the world that aren't. So we just say, thank you for those that have given their lives. We ask your protection on those that are still protecting us. Father, we thank you for our first responders and the way that they're constantly just intervening for us and serving our community. We just ask for your protection on them. And, Lord, tonight, just in this meeting, we ask for your wisdom to make the best decisions possible for this city, for this community. We're grateful for this community. And, Lord, tonight, I thank you for that. In your name, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Counselman, could you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
It'll be honored, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh. Councilwoman Martin. Here. Councilman Sackta. Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, everybody had to look up, okay. It's like being at school again, right? Okay, and at this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items. On this, public comment on agenda items only, please.
Good evening, guys, girls, lady, gentle, gentlelady, and gentlemen, and the mayor. I understand you have the solid waste guy here tonight, and...
Rick, he won't, he won't be here tonight.
He's not gonna be here tonight?
No. He'll be, I think, on the 19th. He may be coming. Anyway. Yep. Anyway, go ahead.
Not gonna be here.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, when he is here, I'd like him to educate the people a bit more about what days of the week, and they can put their garbage out, and how to put their garbage out, and how many feet from the curb, and where the curb is, and what goes where, and who goes what. And it would help, because we get so many people come and go, that they're not here to learn all these things as the year goes on. So that would be my request, for them to better educate the public, help everybody out. As far as this car wash, I wish we could get off our haunches and try and compromise and work something out, so everybody would be, somebody would be happy with this. I don't think it's working out very well right now, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. I'm a member of the Film Fest Committee, and on the consent agenda, item H, we thank you very much for cosponsoring. You know how successful it was last year, and I want to remind everybody, this is the second year. Free, no entry fee, nice cash prizes. It's August 5th, guys, and the gala is November 5th. That's, you know, how time goes by, so get your thinking caps on. And the subject this, this year is the Imperial River, so you have lots of things to choose from. So all you entrepreneur filmmakers, get hot. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Fred Forbes, for the record. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, evening.
One of the things on your agenda is a selection of three city council people to, I guess, select a auditor for the audit of the city. But I was gonna just give you a little thing you might consider. On auditors, the better ones have a system where they are actually internally, they rate each other. They belong to an organ, so you want to get companies that have got high ratings among their peer groups. And there's some pretty good ones around. I know one was actually called in when Florida Gulf Coast had that problem here not so long ago. Dr. Steve would probably remember that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Cheryl James, from Benita Bay. Last time, I thanked you, those of you who voted against the car wash, and I am still against it. I hope you are too. My biggest concern about it is that I'm afraid we're going to look like a city just a little north of us. It reminds me of my city hometown, Dixie Highway, very congested, anything and everything along the highways, and I just hope and pray that that does not happen to Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, on any agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we are two proclamations and presentations, and I am proud to tell you that we have a great visitor here tonight. We've invited Commissioner Kiker and his entourage. Could you come on forward, please? Please give him a hand. He's our county commissioner.
And Larry brings along Roger DeJolay everywhere he goes, home at night, the whole works. Takes him around, briefcase.
I do, I do. And, and you'll find out why in a minute. Right after your first question, you'll find out why. You know, I really do appreciate you inviting us here. I, I look behind me, and I see more people from Lee County in your meeting than I did mine this morning. So I don't know what everybody, what you guys got going, but we need to figure that one out. Mayor, I've gone to Washington DC with you a couple times, and I think we had a pretty neat trip one time, and I think you wrote a story about it.
No, I think that's enough.
And what was the name of that story?
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Yeah, it was, what did I call it?
The Great Mendel.
The Great Mendel.
I think so. And I know you like telling stories, and you're really good at it, by the way. But, you know, this last month, we took a break at, because we worked so hard at Lee County, so we took a month off from meetings, et cetera. And I know I went on vacation. I went down to Key West and rejuvenated. And I heard that you went on a trip recently, Georgia?
Yeah.
What, what, what did you do in Georgia?
It's none of your business, but thank you for asking.
Well, I'm assuming you didn't hunt lions, so what were, what were you hunting when you were up there?
Hunting? I don't know what you're getting at here.
Blueberries or...
Oh, oh, let's think. He does his homework. Hey, I'm supposed to be asking you questions, man.
So, can you walk me through, I mean, you're really, you're good at stories.
I'm gonna go all Daily Show on you on here in a minute here, okay?
So, so walk me through this, would you? So, what do you, you went to Georgia?
We went, yeah, yeah, we did the, the blueberry thing and did all that, and...
What, what is a blueberry thing?
Yeah, blueberry, you know, pick blueberries? You know what blueberries are, don't you?
And how did that go?
It, it, they, someone stole them. Someone stole all our blueberries.
You went all the way to Georgia?
I noticed a blue tint to your fingers.
Yeah. You, you went all the way to Georgia to get blueberries, and you came back with nada?
Hey, if your wife told you to go to Key West, where would you go?
I would go to Georgia and pick blueberries.
No, you wouldn't.
You know, we feel bad about that.
Are you ready?
Roger, can you come up here a second?
I didn't pick blueberries.
You went all the way to Georgia to pick blueberries. Roger, your, your house, your yard, what do you have in the back of your house?
Swimming pool.
And?
A garage.
And?
A blueberry tree.
You do?
Yeah.
He has a blueberry tree right here in Florida. And how's that going?
Pretty well. It's rainy season.
Yeah, yeah. Lot of blueberries?
Oh, lots.
Got anything for the mayor?
No.
I think he does.
Oh, look at you.
We got used to blueberries from Florida.
From Florida?
Yeah, you don't have to go all the way up there.
Is there cereal in that, too?
We have...
Thank you very much. This is the first I've never gotten, I've gotten the raspberry here quite a few times, but I have never gotten blueberries. Oh, my God, look at that. Blueberry? No. Look at the jacket.
Very good, they match.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Get around sale at one Dixies.
And now get busy with it. Get busy with the work here.
So, we go through that in New Hampshire, about people saying Maine lobster in New Hampshire, but no, we have lobsters in New Hampshire, too.
Okay, well, that ends my presentation to you guys. No, actually, a couple things that I'd like to bring up that I think is, is of a great interest to this community, and, and one of them, I think, might be the library, if anyone's interested in that, where we are on that. And we have with us tonight Christine Brady. If you have any questions, she's certainly here to answer them, as well as Roger. But just real quickly, I'll, I'll give you an overview, is that Lee County is 100% prepared to build you a beautiful library right here in your community. It has already been prioritized, it has already been funded, and we are working with Carl and his staff to find a best location, and at which time, and like I said, we're ready to rock and roll. Soon as you guys say go, and this is the place that you want it, we'll be taking public comment and bringing in the community and make sure everybody has a chance for their input, and we're gonna build that library for you. And hopefully, we'll get started on it right away. So if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to take those right now before we move on to our next subject.
Anyone have a question for the question?
Well, I know in the past, we were talking about locations, so where are we with location?
Well, there's several of them. One's the Banyan property is, and I'm not that... Behind the Banyan property, there's an existing location where it's at right now, and if there is another location that you find that's more desirable, then we'll talk about that one, too. So, all the options are on the table, and I don't think this is gonna take a, a long, long time. Ms. Brady has already bought in our consultants and has put together several options that you might choose from, anywhere from changing the square feet, contiguous parking is one of the biggest issues that we're, we're dealing with right now. But, like I said, we're, we're ready to go on this thing. It's just a matter of finding a property.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Okay, good.
Good.
And, and we're real happy to report that to you. We, we had, the, last year, the, the, the county had, had kind of figured out over the years, they've been spending down the reserves to keep the budget going. And so we raised the mill rate to accomplish, and we had two choices, as you know, North Fort Myers and Benita. And the conversation all that time was, which one are we gonna pick first? The board picked both of them at the same time. So we're gonna fund them, even if we have to go into other reserves to do it. We're ready to go, so.
Good deal. We really appreciate that.
Okay, the next thing is that, and we, too, are doing our budget. And a couple of years ago, we kind of changed the way we do our budget workshops. We have began looking at setting policy and letting the budget follow that. And while we were doing that, just to let you know, probably a couple of years ago, again, we were spending all our money out of reserves, and we were not keeping up. By changing the way that we do our business model, if you will, we changed it to the point to where we've actually accumulated almost $100 million in reserves. $70 million of it is reserved strictly for emergency needs, whatever that means. And along with that, we started picking projects that needed to be accomplished that had been sitting on the shelf for eight years or so. And we've done that. We've accomplished that. This year, we've got another $8 million or $9 million that we're gonna spend on extra projects, things like cars for the Sheriff Department, et cetera. Along with that, we have looked at our CIP, which is not necessarily part of the budget, but it's certainly in the formula. Roger and I, I think it was a year and a half ago, began what we call regionalization. And we invited six counties, that would be the chair of each board, and the six county managers, and we brought them together, and we started talking about economic development, tourism, water quality, all those kinds of things. And one of the big subjects that came up was CIP. And what we found, in, in Lee County, if you don't know this, I'll explain this as quick as I can, we have a $600 million challenge to keep up with our road and our infrastructure. What that means is, over the next 20 years, if you look at all the work that's been done in MPO and organizations like that, the estimate is around $600 million, which seems daunting, and it is. And right now, we've been able to establish a couple hundred million dollars through impact fees, through tolls, and through gas taxes. Just 200 of the 600. Well, in that meeting with the regions, we found out, I think it was 900 million for Collier County, 850 million for Sarasota County, 425 million for another, here we go. And we're talking almost a couple of billion dollars just in the southwest Florida. It's not just a Lee County problem. And so, as we were putting together our policy positions, one of the things that we instructed our staff was to go find new revenue sources. And so, in doing so, they came up with this thing called incremental revenue growth, growth incremental funding. There we go. GIF. And I'm gonna have Roger come up here in a second, explain to you how that works, and I'm gonna follow up with what else goes along with that, with that money that we're gonna be bringing in. So if, if it's all right with you, I'm gonna bring up Roger right now and have him explain, and Roger DeJolay.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having us tonight. The, you know, as you well know, the revenue sources available for transportation projects in, in particular is extremely limited, and, you know, for us, it's the three sources that the Commissioner mentioned. It doesn't come close to providing the dollars that we need. And otherwise, we're talking about penny sales tax referendums and those kinds of things, which are terribly unpopular and not something we're considering at the moment. So, in looking for a new way to new revenue, we, we decided to look at old revenue, which is our ad valorem dollars, tax dollars, and was there a way to begin to use some of those dollars to help us with our infrastructure problems? You know, one time, Lee County had a millage rate, a CIP millage rate, some years ago. I think it was done away with in about 2005 or thereabout, because, and it's no longer legal, so we can't go back to it. But what we did do, we decided that for every real estate transaction, really mostly two, with a little nuance, any real estate transaction in any year that increases the taxable value of a property, whether it's a property that's, it's new construction, and there's a certificate of occupancy, or it's a remodeling, or it's a retail sale of a piece of property, that we would take the taxes generated in the first year by that new taxable value. So the difference between last year, I sell my home, and so there's a higher taxable value next year, we would take the increment tax dollars in the first year only, and we would set those aside in a, in an infrastructure fund. It's in keeping with the, at least the theory of growth helping to pay for growth, because theoretically, during good economic times, when real estate market is, is hot, and there's construction and homes being sold, and homes being built, that the, we would see an increase in the number of revenues that we would capture from one year to the next. And in years of economic decline, we would see declining dollars as well, and theoretically, you know, require less dollars, perhaps. The other thing it does, it, if the general fund, in our case, can stand the pressure in the first year, if we can reduce expenses otherwise enough to account for that, for those increment dollars that we're going to set aside for a, an infrastructure fund, then each year thereafter, the, it, there's really no, there's really no impact on the general fund, because in the second year of that home's new taxable value, that goes right to the general fund like it would normally. So this year, as the property values have started to rise, and with some of the new construction and the new taxable values, this fund will only generate about $8 million for the coming year. But given the nature of our growth and the economic conditions, it's, it's pretty easy to see that, over time, that revenue source can generate, I think, easily between 15 and 20 million dollars a year that we can add to the, the other three sources. And while that doesn't begin to really close that entire gap, it, it gives us some other leverage. So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Kiker to maybe talk about that, unless you have questions about...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you talk about the increment, you're talking about the increment for new construction only, right?
No, any, any real estate transaction, whether involving new construction or the sale of a piece of property, if there's a, a higher taxable value generated as a result of that piece of business, then we will capture the tax dollars associated with the new, the new taxable value, the difference between the old taxable value and the new. For example, I've lived in my home for 20 years, and I have homestead exemption, and so my taxable value might be $250,000, but it's got a retail value of $500,000. When I sell my, if I sell that home to you, in the first year, you're not gonna have the, the benefit of homestead exemption, so the new taxable value will be somewhere up around the retail value. So the difference between my 250, and say you bought it from me for 500, those are the dollars, the value that we're gonna capture, the, the taxes paid, real estate taxes, and, and we're going to set those aside and fund. They are taxes that have to be paid under any circumstance, so it's not, it's not a new tax, and it's not an additional burden on the, on the folks paying it, or the economy.
So there's, there's no window for that. So I built my house a long time ago, 1980, we'll say, longer than that. So back then, it had a, probably a $60,000 value. Are you gonna, if I sold my house for $300,000, would you take the increment, the first year after I sold that, you would take that increment right there? Or are you talking about the increment that incurred over the, the year itself, the last year?
No, just, it is simply the difference between the pre-sale taxable value of the home and after the sale taxable value of the home. So if the, if, if the difference is $300,000, then we're gonna capture the property taxes from that $300,000. Now that, if the, but the, the pre-sale...
That's whatever I paid for it, no matter how long ago it was.
But the pre-sale taxable value, it goes to the general fund to pay for services that we would provide otherwise.
Okay.
So those are dollars that would have been captured, had the sale not occurred, but because the sale occurred, we captured the dollars on the difference between the old taxable value and the new taxable value.
Okay, Carl.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, Roger, thanks for the information. Just for clarification, so using your example of your home, taxable value of $250,000, and let's say that the assessed value, taxable assessed value on your house goes up by 5%, you're capped at 3%, right? Does the county capture that 3% year to year? Or is this only if it's sale, it's, it sounds like it's only triggered by a sale or new construction?
It's only, it's only triggered by those two events and a couple other small things, but, but we only capture it in the first year, right?
The first, the...
First year only.
The first year.
First year after the January 1st. At the magic date, okay.
So it's the first year after the sale?
Right.
Okay, all right.
And each year thereafter, those property taxes go to the general fund. It has no impact on the cities, on, on, on the resident who owns the home, on the construction industry. I mean, it's just, there's simply no impact.
The capture occurs inside the city, but it doesn't, in other words, you, you still, you capture...
You still, you get your new taxable value no matter what.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, it, I don't want anybody to think that it doesn't occur within the city, 'cause it, it does. A city resident, on my county taxes, it's gonna happen for that, okay?
It occurs in every, in every parcel in Lee County.
And, and, I was almost calling the CRA again, but in, in the arrangement that we have with the county, with our, with our increment that we're doing in the downtown area, it has no effect on that either.
None whatsoever.
There's not, so that area is held harmless from, from that, totally?
Your, the agreement that we have with the city is held harmless.
Okay, all right. Okay, good. Any question? I'm sorry to drill down like that. Go ahead.
Wouldn't you have gotten that money anyway? Because it's a new taxable value, it would have went to the general fund. You're just putting it in a different account.
That's right.
So, I mean, same money, just different spot.
It is, it is property tax dollars, but it's a method for capturing new property tax dollars. And so if your general fund can stand that pressure in the first year, as your, as your cost to operate goes up, or however that goes, if, if you can, if you're, if you can control expenses in that first year, so that you subtract those dollars from what the general fund would otherwise capture, then after that, it, it has no impact on the general fund.
That's a good point, Mike.
But it's not really new money, because even, even if you don't do this, that money is still gonna be the same amount, it's just all going to general fund.
Actually, that's exactly the point. It's not new money.
It's a dedication.
Yeah, you're, you're just reserving that portion of money for growth.
It's not, you know, it's not a new tax, it's not a higher tax, it's not a fee, it is the same money, taxes that have to be paid anyway.
The new property owner, they see no difference whatsoever.
But the area within the downtown improvement area is clearly accepted out, it's not going to be...
Well, I gotta understand what you mean by accept it out. I'm not, I'm not sure. It has no effect on, it doesn't have any effect on the dollars that you collect.
Okay, so the county's participation will still be the same?
Yeah. Yeah, it has, it has no impact on, on our agreement.
Yep. Okay. All right. Good. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, Bill? Go ahead.
What if the values don't go up?
Then we don't collect.
But what if you've allocated money for, some of that money for whatever, I don't know what, what you, I haven't, you haven't explained that. What are you gonna do with that increment?
It goes into an infrastructure fund.
Oh, it's gonna be a separate, it's gonna be ad valorem, but designated as what?
For infrastructure cost.
So you'll be, you'll have, you'll have the ad valorem, and then you'll have a separate column for that?
You mean, it's, yeah, in its simplest form, sure.
In the budget, not on the tax bill?
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, not on the tax, but no, in the budget. It's an accounting exercise.
What if the values go down?
Then, well, if a, if a piece of property is sold, and the value is, and it creates a lower taxable value, then we won't collect any increment.
Well, assuming it goes up, and where is that, that money going to go to? Is that going to go for roads, or...
It, it's gonna go into a, into a fund that we will use to help pay for infrastructure projects, roads, as an example.
Counsel, it's very similar to what you have done by ordinance with the beach reserve account for beach re-nourishment, where you have a dedicated fund that you have some special rules on. So I think that's kind of analogous, it's just a forced savings account.
Except, instead of identifying a, an exact dedicated value, a dedicated amount, you're taking whatever it is that, that the growth generates, so far as the growth in, in value.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's the difference.
Exactly.
You know, the, the city would do something that's affected, we would just go through our budget cycle and say, you know what, we need X amount of dollars, so we're gonna take so much out of the general fund this year, or we're gonna take none out this year, or whatever. And, and what you're doing is saying, we're gonna do whatever this generates, whatever the community generates. So you've, may try to make a correlation between the growth in the area, the growth that's generated, or that, that generates the income, and, and what you spend in the budget, right?
That's correct. In fact, one thing I wanted to add, because as Roger said, this is, this is an accounting feature. When, when I first got in office, one of the first things we did is, is we took a $70 million debt, and we forgave it. And what that was, was internal transfer of dollars inside Lee County to do these types of projects, because we needed the money to do that. This is transparent. It's right out front, you can see what's going on, you see how much is going in, and you see how much is going out. It's really simple in that way. But there's other, there's another piece to this, another layer to this, that we're excited about. And we have been to Washington DC with this already. that we're excited about. And we have been to Washington DC with this already. We have already sat with appropriations committee, we've already sat with Mr. Clausen, Mr. Rooney, and a few of the other folks that are up there. And what's going on in Washington is that they're not, they're not, there's no extra money for transportation projects, and if you've been watching lately, they just passed another, let's forgive ourselves for not making a decision for another couple of years. That's their 35th one in a row. So, for us to plan on money coming from Washington DC, nothing's going to happen. One of the things that we heard, and was it?
Diaz-Balard.
Diaz-Balard. Roger picked this up in, in one of his readings, and had to do specifically with their transit system, but what he said in there was that, we can't help local governments until they learn how to help themselves. And this is our way of helping ourselves. Because what happens, and, and, and for those of you know, as the money goes to the state of Florida, they prioritize, and then they allocate based upon their priorities. One of the things that we're asking them to do is to take a look at this, because what we've done is we went from 200 million to 400 million, which goes a long ways towards that 600 million. What we're asking is if they'll take a look at their prioritization, and as we all know, as soon as you start matching funds, or participating in some of your local projects, what happens to your priority? Goes straight up in the air, and things start happening, and that's what we're looking at. If we can offer to them that we have the money, and we have the commitment to make these projects, we'd like some matching funds, maybe we can change their prioritization, and change the way that they're doing business, in terms of how the money's coming down to local businesses. And we think we've got a pretty good edge on that. And if that is successful, we certainly might be looking at $600 million at the end of it, that's our goal. But right now, I think with the work that Roger and his staff has done, we can easily look at $400 million, that makes a huge difference. What do we do in MPO? We, we take a look at the projects, we don't have enough money, let's reprioritize it till we do. And then the next year, what happens? We take our priorities, and we redo them until we got enough money till we do. It would be nice if we took the priorities that were given from you folks, and others, and fund them, and we need to get these projects going, and, and we gotta quit talking about them. So, that's what this is all about.
Alright. I, I have one other question, and it has to do with the, the other side of the, the, the budget there, when it comes to where, where you spend the money, what actually gets spent. Because as you might imagine, I mean, this is, it all goes into one big pot, I just imagine, all goes in one big pot. Other funding sources might identify that, or might require that when, when a certain area generates a spectacular amount of money, then the money goes back to that area. How are you, how are you going to try to get a handle on identifying what areas, what specific areas, whether it's by city, whether it's by zone, whether it's by area, generates a great deal of money and has a particular need for that? How are you going to handle that, so far as prioritizing, in a fair ma, a fair way?
It's a good point, because by law, some money has to be spent in certain places, on certain things. So, that's a given, and that's part of that first $200 million. This $200 million, we have carte blanche, we can spend it anywhere we want to, and we don't have those rules. So, I would submit to you that, that we're going to have to take a different look at how we prioritize even what we do. Example, there's a huge need for sidewalks in a lot of communities. When you prioritize, how do you prioritize a sidewalk next to a dangerous intersection? It's never going to win. But if we have enough money that we can allocate, we might sector that off, and say, we're going to put $5 million a year for sidewalks till we catch up, and prioritize inside that, while we also look at the intersections and all the different things. So, I, I guess what it says, it's going to take the handcuffs off, and a lottery guards, just like you were talking about.
But in a, so far as, let's say, let's just say the cities, for example, we're, we're all vying for money out of the same pot, and just, I know it's only $8 million, or, or $8 million, only $8 million, catch me saying that again, give me a good shot in the head there. It's gotta be $8 million, but you know, you're gonna have cities being saying like, what about me, what about me, the things we need. Do you foresee maybe someday tweaking this system to where you actually say, okay, there's a percentage here, so, you know, here's, here's a percentage that you're going to be collecting at, that areas might accrue separately, or do you think that that would be something you might look into?
That's a, that's a really good question, and, you know, we all, we're always really careful when we start talking about applying percentages.
Yeah.
Because revenue grows at different rates, and the percentage we apply this year may not be the right percentage two years from now, for example, because revenues go up or down. And I can, we could spend a while, I could tell you some real life examples where that, that's hurt us. But I think when, for these dollars, along with other discretionary dollars that the board's gonna have available to them, they're gonna have to, we're gonna set up a process that, so they can make some policy decisions and prioritize. But one of the things that will likely happen, you know, with each of the cities, with the exception of Astero, which we'll be negotiating shortly, we have master transportation agreements and cost-
Or forever, one, one or the other.
Yeah, you know.
Sorry.
It's okay. We have master transportation agreements and cost share agreements, and so, just like it's, it's our goal to, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna apply dollars that we can talk to Florida Department of Transportation about, and then hopefully get a little higher on our priority list, so the cities that are prepared to participate with us, I suspect will make it a little higher on the priority list as well. These dollars are completely discretionary, and, you know, our advice to the board is going to be to spend them where they're needed the most.
Alright, alright. Well, that, that's where I think that, that all of us, and it's one thing, that you're gonna collect this money, and, and good, and it would have been collected anyway, you're just dedicating it to the county overall. I think where the cities are really going to get really involved is like, okay, well, you know, guess where all the growth happened, where's ours, boss, right? And, and, you know, we just, I, I think we would just ask you collectively to remember who put the money in there, really, I mean, kinda.
Let me just help you, you'll be part of the, when we define what that process is, you'll be part of that conversation, so I'm sure you'll be heard there, for sure.
Actually, I won't, but, somebody, somebody else will.
Can I pick somebody else?
Yeah, good luck with that, but anyway. Any other questions on this subject, before we, we let them wrap up here? You got anything else?
No, if you need questions about anything.
Okay.
Well, I guess yet, in that vein, where everybody says, well, this Benita's a donor community, and Lehigh might be a receiving community, so to speak.
In fact, by the way.
Where does, how does that shake out?
Well-
Or how is this any different than the library fund, where we've got a donor community, and?
Well, the definition of donor, okay, is that, that it, we base our budget on $172,000 a house. And, and what is it, in, in Benita, call, is it 3?
Higher than that.
So, so you're a donor, so is Fort Myers Beach, so is Sanibel, so is Astero, but we also got 100 square miles out of Lehigh, they're 47,000. And so, if you look at the, the money that comes into the, to the county, we say grace over all of it. So, that's how the money gets spread out. So, it's not necessarily because you put in more, you get more, that's not how that works. And, and, and I'll recall very back, when, when, when your mayor put together with all the other mayors, which was probably one of the best things that happened to Lee County, where we started getting together and talking, we actually sat down as a group, and said, what's our number one priority in each one of our towns, and then we prioritized within ourselves, which, what we thought was the highest priority for Lee County. And we came up with 1, 2, and 3, and we presented that to Lee County. So, I think that's how it works, I think we all live in the same community, and we're gonna have to work together. But yeah, you're a donor community, no question about it, lucky you, you know, your budget probably is going to reflect that. Our budget reflects the $47,000 and all the infrastructure that we have to put in place, too, so, or the services that we do. The infrastructure comes out of the CIP, it's a big melting pot, and you're sharing that. That's why you're a member of the MPO, you've got more votes on there than, than, let's say, Fort Myers Beach, where I think they have one. So, it, it's how it works, that's the system that we've been given.
Right, thank you.
Anything else? Hey, we really appreciate you coming down here, and I hope you make it kind of a habit, come by, you know, anytime you want to, and come give us the good news, what you're doing, and that'd be great. And Roger, thank you very much. Carl, we're, we're all looking to, working towards something here, do you have something else there, Ryan?
Well, I, I'd like a bowl of strawberries next time you come.
I'm gonna share these, don't worry about it.
No ready whip, okay, we're out of there.
I have a sub sandwich, and you know, we're good.
Thank you very much, give him a hand, please, everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's nothing else on the presentations that we already have?
No, and, and just by way of explanation, after the agenda had been finalized, we heard from Lindsey Sampson, requesting that we put off that presentation until your next meeting. And I think that was to accommodate Pam Keys, who's the head of Lee County Utilities, who will be joining him when they come on the 19th. So, we thought that was appropriate to put that off.
Okay, and what, what, just, just so everybody doesn't have to guess, I mean, what is the presentation going to be about, about the new rate structure?
There are new rate structures, and then there are some fluctuations that differ a little bit from they have in years past, so I think they were just willing to explain, take a little time to explain what they're doing from their perspective, and to answer any questions about not only the rate structures, but the functionality of, of the department, so.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, and Counsel, we're to the consent agenda, we have items A, wow, it's a pretty good size, A through J. Take a close look before we, see if there's anything you would like to pull before you go along.
I'd like to pull F.
Okay, item F. Mike, anything else, Counsel?
The sports club, I'm not sure.
That's accurate.
Oh, that is, okay, perfect, yep, we're on the same page.
Anything else, we're good?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder.
There's a motion by Counsel Martin, and a second by Pete. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Martin.
Aye.
Counselwoman Slaught.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Counselwoman Longcar.
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh.
Okay, item F, Mike.
Well, I just had a question, I wanted to know what the selection criteria was, being on the liaison for the Y, I'm sure they're gonna ask me, you know, why they didn't get picked, so.
Sure.
I just want to have all the answers.
Yep, what we did was, we did meet on July 29th, it was the selection committee, we reviewed all the proposals, and the proposals did include giving us a detailed curriculum and program of what, what they would be doing for us, and for the community in our after school and summer camp, as well as cost. We asked what they would be charging the community, and we also asked for a percentage back to the city that we would get in return. Based on that criteria, the, all the proposals submitted, sports club was ranked the top one, because we did receive a very detailed curriculum of what they did. It included 45-minute rotations, exactly what they do each day for after school and summer camp. The cost was all about the same, between all three, within $5 of each other, so that really wasn't a big factor, since it was the same. So, it really came down to the proposals themselves, and the details that they gave on the program, and what we saw as a good quality program for the, for the rec center.
So, there was just more offerings for the kids?
Um, it was more detailed in the top two than it was in, in the third ranks. We didn't really see, receive much detail to really know what exactly the program they would be doing for us. So, it was really hard to rank them any higher, based on the information that they submitted.
Okay.
I think, what, one, you, could you meet with Mike after the meeting or sometime?
Absolutely.
And really, you probably, out of, yeah, it's kind of a little difficult, I think she could probably give you a more detailed description of, of the reasons probably than, because we have a great deal of respect for the YMCA and stuff like this, and I don't think she really wants to critique them at open mic night here, too much. I mean, they're, they're a great organization, they do a great job, and this was just about, more or less about presentation, and about the details, and about having to judge it right at that one moment in time, right? I mean, that's really what it was.
Right, it was completely based on the proposals that were submitted. We didn't put our own opinions into it whatsoever, it was literally judged completely on the proposal.
On the submission itself.
On the submission itself.
Well, yeah, because we didn't have the, the proposals, we just had what the selection ranking was, so.
Strawberries.
Ah, no she didn't.
Yeah, I don't have any.
You can't buy them with blueberries.
But yes, I would be happy to meet with you at a-
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea, because they, they're gonna ask you, right, so, okay. Anything else?
No, that's good, that answered one part, and then the second part of my question is not Jermaine, right now, it's for probably a conversation later for the, where the skateboards are right now, but that's not for this, so.
Correct.
One part answered, one part yet to be discussed, so thanks.
Good. Mike, is that good?
I'm good.
Okay, was there a motion to approve that item?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, right here, Stephen, this is the second. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Slaught.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Counselwoman Longcar.
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Counselwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, and I think that that's good, it's time for public comment, and any member of the public wishing to speak on any agenda, well, not, on any city item, please come forward, on any city item, agenda or otherwise. Come on up, everybody just come on up, go ahead.
Hello again, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I, I was out of town, and I missed the budget hearing, and I'm trying to get caught up on everything, but you know, when you're up in the hills of Tennessee, like Georgia, not blueberries, you don't find out too much, but I've been trying to catch up. And the only comment I want to say is, you know, from the very beginning, my subject is the playground at the dog park. I was there for the preliminary opening, and the regular opening, and I know I've talked to a lot of people, and it was our understanding that there was going to be a playground there, and a lot of people are disappointed. And I just, I'm trying to catch up on all the news, and I did read about the thing, the problems with the skateboard thing, and I can understand, you know, it depends on which side of the fence you're on. You can't put a lot of money, I understand there's a lot of repairs need to be made, and they're saying that attendance or usage is down. You have to be careful about putting a lot of money into something that a lot of people aren't using, and yet you don't want to disappoint the ones that really enjoy doing it. But I hope that you will reconsider the playground at the dog park, because I think it's, it's really important for everyone in that neighborhood, and there's a lot of neighbors to the north, too, that were interested in it. So, I sure hope that you'll reconsider it. And again, the numbers about the skateboard, the skatepark thing, as I said, if, if you are a skateboard enthusiast, and it's going to go by the wayside, you're not going to be happy, but maybe it could be, I understand it's the, the construction, I guess it was made out of wood, maybe you could look into numbers of constructing it with something more durable. But I hope you'll consider it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
Hey, welcome.
My name is Jim Worster, I'm a resident of Benita Springs in my prior life before retirement. I spent over 40 years as an engineer, designing projects for developers, as well as many government agencies. I'm very familiar with the standards relevant to adding traffic signals to US and state highways at private road intersections. To that end, I'm aware of the limited discussion that took place at the city's budget meeting hearing July 23rd, related to the approved, proposed signal installation at US 41 in Riverview. It was stated that the developers on both sides of this intersection will possibly approach the city to participate in the cost of the signal. I'm aware and participated in several discussions for the past two years with FDOT, both email exchanges and a personal meeting with the BARTO, at BARTO, with the FDOT officials, as to the initially presented traffic, traffic study signal warrant analysis, and the subsequent redistribution of the traffic counts to satisfy federally required warrants to, to allow signal installation. In my opinion, some very creative interpretation of the actual counted volumes were made to satisfy the minimum requirements. It was confirmed to me by the DOT that the cost of design, as well as construction of this proposed signal, will not be their responsibility, and was required to be accomplished by the owners of the private roads on each side of the intersection. This is in continuity with established federal requirements. I understand the owners and developers of the private property will need to come up with 400-plus thousand dollars for this installation, which will benefit their financial future return. It is standard for the developer and owners of the property to pay for the signal. The city has already done their part by really helping the developers and owners to get where they are today, by helping them attain the FDOT approval for this signal. Having received this benefit, it is nothing more than appropriate, if indeed customary, that they pay for it. I do not see the use of our precious taxpayer, taxpayer dollars to subsidize a private investment as anywhere near appropriate for our city. I've got written copies of this, I'll be happy to answer questions, and I know it's going to come up in future, future budget hearings.
Thank you very much, well done. What was your name, sir?
Jim Worster.
Jim, thank you very much, good job.
Would you like copies?
Sure, if you want to just give it to Audrey right there, that'd be good. There you go. Thank you so much. Anyone else this time can come forward on any city item, if you'd like? No? Okay, good, we'll move on, and we're at first reading, oh, we're at first reading of the following ordinances, and there will be no public comment at this, because there's, it's the first reading.
Thank you.
Second reading is scheduled, well, maybe scheduled for Monday.
This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Hyatt Equities LLC to amend the Pelican Landing Development of Regional Impact to incorporate the following changes, one, to resume from AG2 to RPD/CPD, and add to the Pelican Landing DRI, Land Development Area B/Hotel. And second, to consider deviations in the Land Development Area B/Hotel, on land located at 5274, 5272, and 5260 Coconut Road, Benita Springs, Florida, 34134, on 1.1 more or less acres, provided for an effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance, the ordinance will be advertised for Monday, August 17th, beginning at 9:00 AM in these chambers, which is your regular zoning hearing date.
Okay, Counsel?
Question.
Yes, question?
I see members of the community development people here, there were really two issues in that, that area, but if I could get John or someone to come up just a second, please. John, two issues that were brought forward to me were, were traffic, which really don't have any jurisdiction over, it's not a city road to begin with. But secondly, is the environmental issues that, that were possibly invading into environmentally sensitive areas. I think that's been resolved, can you speak to that?
Can I speak to this?
Well, actually, that would be determined during the hearing. Yeah, there were some matters that came up during the hearing. My preference to keep the record in one place would be to address it during the second hearing.
That's fine. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to move to a second reading?
I'll move.
A motion to second reading? Is there a second? Second? Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Okay. And this second reading will be Monday, August 17th, 2015.
At 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Okay. Do you have anything else underneath those first readings or you just need to go to your city attorney's report?
City attorney's report.
Have at it.
And I'll start us off here. Alex Boswell-Eversole, Assistant City Attorney for the Record. This is a request for permission to prepare and advertise ordinances to increase the level obtained by the city of Bonita Springs participation in the Florida Green Building Coalition's Green Local Government Standards Program. The ordinances will be individually scheduled. They must be adopted no later than the end of November 25th because to qualify for the program. They'll need to be in place by the end of the year for the deadline, for the application deadline. As you can see, there's four separate ordinances. Staff is seeking councils for permission to prepare and advertise, which staff will begin to do upon your approval.
So the, it says, permission to prepare and advertise ordinances to increase the level obtained by the city's Bonita Springs participat, what does that mean?
What it means is the city is going towards the certification program. And that's something that Jennifer DeFaula-Hagan has been working very diligently on with staff, mostly staff outside of the legal. She's worked a lot with Nicole and Meg to get all the points. In order to get just some more points, there are some ordinances that we would need to have on the books.
So this means increase the level of participation? I think this is just a, this is a Florida cracker critiquing grammar here? So I'm just, that's what you're trying to do, is increase the level of participation in the...
All right, let's have staff.
In the green building program? Come on up here.
Oh, she's here.
I don't get to talk to you very often.
I know. Good evening. For the record, Jennifer DeFaula-Hagan.
What does this sentence mean?
What it means is that we are trying to obtain as many points as possible to get the highest designation as a green designated city.
We should write that down here. Sorry, being facetious again. That's my job.
And through this, there are programs that we are already doing, practices that we're already doing in-house, that we have to document in an ordinance fashion in order to obtain the points for the standard.
Oh, good.
So this would be going through and memorializing some of the already operating practices that we do, standard best management practices that we may not have documented in an ordinance form, but that we are currently doing.
And you are going to bring these things back, kind of one at a time here, so we can kind of pick and choose which ones we want to do?
One at a time, and we can pick apart and discuss them as drafted.
Nice.
And to individual questions at that time.
This sounds like a good thing. Steve?
It's really an administrative chore, and we have all the pieces in place. The objective is to make sure that the sustainability strategy we're following has measurable outcomes and we can prove that we're doing the things that ought to be right for the city environmentally. So I'd move to move this forward.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion, questions? Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question on here. It says the final ordinance would ban open burning of yard waste. Does that prohibit people from having backyard fires, you know, that month that we have cooler weather down here that everybody likes to have a fire?
Oh, no, 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 no. No. Not at all.
And is it, I mean, is it really beneficial not to like burn leaves or something?
No, this would only apply to recyclable materials. What are the other things listed there? Household yard waste that would be not horticultural stuff, not stuff that you would be doing for some mores or a family picnic in the back. So we're really looking at bigger like tires, those kind of things, anything that would be hazardous or could pollute the environment or the nearby environment or leach into our water.
But if somebody cut their bushes and they just wanted to burn those, that'd be fine.
That would not apply to this, yeah.
Can't burn bike tires.
Yeah, well, I mean, I wouldn't think anybody out there would be burning tires or recyclable materials.
Never know.
Bless your citrus cigar. All right. Any other questions?
We would follow statute.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right, well, good.
I might add, Mayor, just to, so Jennifer's been doing a great job working with our entire staff to basically complete the application, where we're going to be found to be bronze, silver, gold, or platinum. And frankly, right now, we're in the silver area, but we have, I've actually challenged staff that, and this is our self-assessment, by the way, it's not, we have not submitted the application. But to gain additional points, we did recognize that we were going to have to make, to actually codify some of the things that we are already doing, and that's what Jennifer said. So I've challenged the staff to try to get us to gold, okay? Because that's a, I think that's a finding that lasts with us for about five years, right? So I'd rather be gold than silver. And that's the challenge to staff to bring to council, and that's where we're headed, just so you know.
Good. Good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
It sounds a little bureaucratic that we're doing this, but the fact is, it's all about branding the city as a destination. So my motion still stands.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jim.
Great, thank you.
Bye, bye. Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Okay. Item B, under the city attorney's report.
Thank you. This is a request by Neil Montgomery to extend the Bonita Bay DRI development order from April 15, 2019, to April 13, 2024, consistent with the process in LDC 4-131 and Florida statute 380.06, 19E2. Under that statute, there are certain amendments to developments of regional impact that you can do without needing to go to the full public hearing. And one of them is time extensions. And so you have such a request. We also have a resolution that if approved, the resolution will go forward. This is a request primarily because of the community known as Seaglass at Bonita Bay, which is a condominium project. They want to make sure during their whole time of development, they have the right to build.
Good. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Is there a second? Is motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay. Item C.
Okay, the next item is also a Neil Montgomery request, and this is a request for a public rehearing on the zoning action that was taken on Cardome LLC, for council to reconsider their July 1st, 2015 decision when they denied the Bonita Springs car wash CPD request. This process is not something that council normally does. In fact, the last time the council had one of these types of requests, it was for Steinway Piano, wanted to have a statute for a sign, and they went through this process. So that was probably, the only one on council at that time would have been Mayor Nelson. That was about 2003. And in fact, this particular request does allow a timing where they're able to toll the time limit. So in other words, they can go to court after this. They still have their timeframe as a result of it. This is a paper process. In other words, council would be reviewing, or council should be reviewing, the petition that they have before them, that they have received, along with staff's analysis and response. You are to deliberate on it as to whether or not any one of you may have misunderstood or overlooked some of the evidence that was provided during the course of the hearing, based on the record that you had. Ms. Montgomery provided about 16 points originally and then added an additional point when you, when council recently handled the Burkhardt case. And she has that argument, and that's added to the supplement. In addition, there's the staff analysis, which adds a response as to each of those points. I do want to point out one other thing. Recently, I gave you a copy of a case called Shamrock versus Vero Beach, and that was one very similar as far as misunderstanding. That was where there was a misinterpretation as to a particular land development code provision. In that particular situation, the courts normally look at substantial competent evidence, what's in the record, and it's fine. But if it's something where there is just one point where council could have misinterpreted, that's something that could be a reversible error. Counsel, the other thing is if you do decide to go forward, a decision to allow the rehearing or grant the rehearing would not mean that you have to grant the rezoning. It just means you have the ability to have a rehearing, you know, to have the full record of what went on. But as I said, it's just one point. The granting of a rehearing is a discretionary function of council. You do not have to grant a rehearing, recognizing that if you do not grant the rehearing, it either means the case is over or Ms. Montgomery can now go through her judicial review for judicial relief.
Okay. And just to kind of lay out a couple of other things here, maybe for counsel to get some help with, so far as the ability to call, a call before they start calling up members of our staff up, they can't do that. It's supposed to be based directly on this. So you can refer to what was in the record itself, your, what you remember from the case. You can, when you have your discussions deliberations here, you can refer to that. But so far as having a staff member come up, you can't do that. You can't have Neil Montgomery come up and members of the public or anything like that. That's what you're supposed to do there. And then so far as, let's see, what else is there? I think that's about it.
You're supposed to either grant or deny the request for the rehearing based exclusively upon the written request and supporting documentation.
Right.
And the administrator's written analysis.
Okay. And another, the other part I wanted to point out is that in order for Neil Montgomery and the, and the applicant to proceed down any other path, this was a stepping stone in that path. This was the first avenue to give council an opportunity.
Actually, this is one of the few things that the applicant does not have to do to exhaust their administrative remedies. This is something that is not a typical process, but it is something that is afforded in the land development code that Ms. Montgomery is taking advantage of, which is fine, because it is a process that we have available before going to court. If there's a true misunderstanding or overlooking of evidence that occurred.
I wouldn't say taking advantage of. I'd say giving council the opportunity to reconsider.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyway, counsel, have at it. What, what's your pleasure? Janet?
I just have a point to ask that I was not present, so I guess I need to stay out of this conversation then, huh?
It'd be hard for you to overlook or miss.
Exactly. But I just wanted to remind everyone, I wasn't here, so.
But if you watched the meeting and you may have felt something, then feel free to participate.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure? I know it's not, probably not much of a pleasure, or what's your feelings on this?
Move to disapprove.
Uh...
Not to reconsider?
Yeah, just a motion to not reconsider?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second for that?
A second for discussion.
There's a second for discussions purposes. And yes, go ahead.
Just very quickly, the whole, the whole issue here today is not whether that was right or wrong. I mean, the decision, the decision was, did we understand what decision we made? Is that, is that correct? It's not whether we thought it was okay to build it or not build it. The question was, did we understand what the issue was?
Did you understand the various issues? And Ms. Montgomery raised 17 points.
I, thank you. That's all I need.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call.
Councilman Longcart.
Let's make sure we know what we're voting for.
The, okay, this is a vote to deny the request to reconsider.
Right. So a yes means no.
Yes, yes means that you don't want to reconsider.
And a no means yes.
Yeah.
So the motion is to deny the rehearing.
Yes is to deny.
So Ms. Montgomery can either go to court or do something else, whatever is determined there. And then a...
Yeah. The question is, would you like to reconsider? Or no?
It's a denial of the rehearing.
Yeah, yeah. So you made it, you made...
No, 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 you're...
I know, I know. I don't care. I'm not helping, am I?
No. He made an opposite.
The motion was to not reconsider, so you will say yes if you do not want to reconsider.
Correct.
And I want to point out, it's not just overlooking, and just like I pointed out to the Shamrock versus Vero Beach, it's not just overlooking the facts, but whether any points of law were misunderstood or overlooked or misinterpreted during...
Various reasons, yes.
And again, should I abstain from this because I was not part of that?
I think you can vote.
Okay.
If you watch the...
All right. Ready.
Okay. And to, to...
You have your rights.
We're going to try not to, I'll try not to mess it up this time, but so if you vote yes, you're saying no, no, thank you, no, to the consideration. Everybody, okay? So now let's go ahead and roll call.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
No.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay. And there we have, do you have anything else for us? Audrey?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, we are to the city managers' report. Carl, welcome home.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's great to be back.
Where'd you go? You don't have blueberries or anything? We're not gonna go through another painful thing like that.
I wish I could have brought back a whole case of Emo's Pizza because that was great. I was in St. Louis, my hometown, and great to be there for a little over a week.
Emo's Pizza doesn't seem good, sound good, but go ahead.
Awesome.
What do you got for us?
Okay, so most of this city managers' report is actually going to be Ann Wright, our finance director, but item number one is the normal presentation of the financial reports. We stand ready for any questions you might have on that, okay? And then item number two, and item, or actually item B and item C, I would like Ann to come up and address with you. Ann?
Good evening, Ann Wright, Finance Director. The first item is to approve appointment of an audit committee. Our current contract with our external auditor has ended, and so we're now in the position to move forward with the selection for a new auditor, and the state statutes are very clear as to what that procedure needs to be. There needs to be an audit committee appointed by the city council, and they will work through the process of selecting an external auditor to recommend back to the city council. What is in your packet is a resolution for you to consider, which would identify the three members of city council who will serve on the audit committee, and then we can move forward with the process.
Okay, so there'll be three members of city council to sit on it?
Yes, sir.
And would there be additional members as well?
There will not be any additional members, but...
Of the, of the...
Of the actual audit committee.
Yes.
But there will be additional resources. In fact, this resolution provides the opportunity, if the committee chooses, to actually hire a consultant or someone external to the city to assist with the process, and then appropriate city staff would be available as resources as well.
And can you, can you, for counsel, can you, when will this happen? When will they, approximately, what month will this happen?
This month.
Excuse me?
This month, August.
This month, so, so I'm just laying it out, so if you're not gonna be here, don't be on the committee, all right?
That's correct.
What other, what other things, I mean, time constraints, you figure this is gonna be handled in one, one meeting or two meetings, or?
The first thing that will need to occur is the development of a request for proposal, and we certainly have drafts available and samples from other entities for that. So that should be a relatively quick process. The key there is identifying the selection process. The committees are responsible with identifying, what criteria are we looking for in our external auditor? And that's pretty standard in most requests for proposals for governmental entities. There is significant information that's required regarding the state of Florida with the laws and regulations that come into play with, with the audit process and reporting process, so that would probably be something to consider. But those types of items, the audit committee themselves need to identify. This is a criteria that we are establishing for firms who would qualify to be considered for our external audit.
And so will these members of city council be acting as a committee that will be making a recommendation to city council, and city council actually does that?
That's correct.
And will they be governed by the sunshine and then...
Yes, sir.
Except it'll be a closed meeting like we did before, and then they'll, they'll play the recording afterwards?
No, the statute is very clear, it has to be open to the public.
It's open to the public, that means open to the public, okay. All right, counsel, what would you like, what would you like to do?
I'd like to be a member of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, so we got two volunteers, we have another volunteer, three? And anybody else want, so it looks like Bill, Pete, and Steve would like to be a member of that committee? Is everybody okay with that? Mike, you okay with that, or, you all good? There you go, Mike just made a motion to accept their... Mike made a, made a motion to accept, got some along cart, and Steve, Steve's volunteering here, I make a second, I second the motion. Any, any comment? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte?
Aye.
Okay, well done, Mike. All right. Okay, anything else for us?
I would like to let the committee know and congratulations on your appointment, that I do have some brochures that are on order that will be delivered to each of you that talks about the roles and responsibilities.
Okay, and you'll be contacting them when, to coordinate the time that they can meet and that type of thing like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and actually, just for everybody, this is any, on a special audit, this is the same kind of audit that we usually do, it's just a different way of, of choosing the auditor, is that correct?
That's correct, it's our regular required external audit of our financial statements, and, and there have been the changes within the law that have governed this process.
Okay, and thank you very much. Thank you.
I have the next item.
You have, you have, you have the next item, the selection of lobbying services?
Yes, sir.
Oh, well, welcome back.
Thank you, if it's okay to proceed. We did submit after your approval of a request for a proposal, or a request for qualifications from firms interested in providing lobbying services to the city, and there were four responses, and in that statement of qualifications, we did say that if less than five responses were received, that it would, there would not be a shortlisting done, that it would come to full counsel for your consideration. What we've outlined in the green sheet is that you have an opportunity tonight to make a selection, because you did each receive copies of those four statements of qualifications that we received, as well as in the packet, there is a summary of the information, summarizes the information that was requested to be incorporated into the statement of qualifications, and then what the response was from each of the four firms, as well as their executive summary that they submitted within that document. So tonight, you could choose to do a one-step process, which would be to rank the firms tonight based on the information that you've received, or secondly, you may choose to do interviews, at which time you, tonight you would request that interviews be scheduled with the firms, and after that interview process, then you would rank and make the selection.
Okay, counsel, Janet?
Thank you. I understand that how the process and why the city needs to go out and entertain other applications for firms, but counsel, I'm really pleased and happy with the, with the present relationship with the work being done and has been done by Capital Strategies, and I'd like to just go ahead and recommend that we renew a contract with them.
A second, a second there.
There's a motion, and there's a second, and any other discussion? No? Hello? You wanted to say something, I can tell you had that look.
Yes, I would prefer that you actually follow the RFQ and rank them, you may rank them number one, and that may be the consensus, and then rank the other people two and three, but rather than just voting.
Do you, okay, so, and we don't, you want to do that verbally?
You may first decide to be a one-step process, which is perfectly fine, and then after you decide to be a one-step process, decide to rank the firms, and you may all wish to rank Capital Strategies and then rank the others accordingly.
So we, so the motion cannot go forward then, is that correct?
It would be deviating from the process, and I think that when you start deviating from the process, then people could have claims against the city for not following the process.
Okay.
If it's withdrawn, I'd like to make a motion that we do a one-step process and rank the firms. Yep.
Yep, there's a motion to do that, is there a second?
I'll withdraw.
There's a motion and a second to do this as a one-step process?
Withdraw our motion first.
Do you have forms?
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
That's all right.
Thank you. There's a motion, second to do a one-stop process, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
I'm sorry, yes.
One-step process.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte?
Aye.
Okay, now that we've done that, how would you like to proceed here?
We actually have ballots set up, so if you wish to put your, who your number one is, and then if you could put your two, three, four, that'd be great, or at least, nice if you put one or two.
One means good, right?
One is good.
One is good.
One is the best. Number one is the person you want as...
One is good.
Also, please make sure you put your name on the ballots.
I was gonna go Monty Python there, one, two, not so much.
Please put your name on the ballot.
Oh.
Goes up to eleven.
We don't have secret ballots.
And you can't rank yourself, so.
Do not rank yourself, although it's very funny. I'm gonna go back and pull.
Okay.
Do you want Alex?
Ready for pickup?
He's coming, he's coming.
And you thought that being an attorney was gonna be boring.
Attorney slash comic relief.
Sorry, just stand right here in front of him and wait.
Gotta drain him.
Yeah? There you go. You guys calm down.
Who said this couldn't be fun?
Okay, we good?
Tap sheet, thank you, Telly.
Okay, just tell us who's got the most number ones. Go fish.
Capital Strategies, Capital Strategies, Capital Strategies, Capital Strategies.
Winner, winner, okay.
Mayor Nelson, Capital Strategies, I like Ben.
Okay, anyone wanna make a motion reaffirming that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, motion and a second to reaffirm Capital Strategies.
And the remainder of the ranking will be with the clerk.
And you'll figure it out, yep. Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Bam, that's how legislative body works right there. Very badly.
Take that to Tella, take that to Tella. Rock and roll.
All right, okay, what do we got now?
All right, one last thing, Mr. Mayor, and that is the review of the legislative priorities. We've given you a green sheet tonight, we also gave you correspondence from Carol Green, our newly selected lobbyist, but also about, about those issues that may come up in this upcoming session. I'm just basically introducing the topic tonight, what I'd like to do is perhaps if you want to talk tonight about some of the issues that you're concerned about, we certainly want to hear that, if you'd like to take the next week or so to think about that and submit those to my office via email, that'd be great, because I'd like to schedule this for August the 19th, to have you officially vote on your priorities, so that Capital Strategies understands where we're headed.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that? And I don't know if you have anything tonight or not, but...
That sounds good. Counsel, you okay with that?
Yep. Okay, we'll look forward to hearing from you then. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
John, what do you got for us?
Just one little bit of update, at the budget workshop, we talked a little bit about unpaved roads and going ahead with a couple of the ones where we do have full participation from the residents in terms of the license agreements and funding. We've already given a notice to proceed to one of the low bidders on one of the streets, and I just wanted to indicate, I mean, this is a process, obviously, that you've already approved in terms of the concept and approved the budgeting for, the process for. We will be going ahead with a second contractor who was a low bidder on a different street. We were holding off because we were just waiting for the final payment from some of the residents, and we are, we have all but one in, and I expect that one to come in later this week. So the reminder is just that we're gonna be going ahead with that contractor, but we'll be bringing back that contract to you basically for ratification because it's over $50,000. So just to, to keep you in the loop in terms of where the process is, we didn't want to wait another two weeks until you met again before we could start with him, but we will be bringing his contract back to you.
Okay, good, good. Counsel, you okay with that? Good, any questions? Good. All right, any other staff member got anything? If not, we'll go to item A, 12A, and this is to authorize me to send a letter to Fish and Wildlife Commission with the petition. As you all know, Audrey and I get a lot of fan mail from the beach, I'll call it fan mail because I am, and it's about the shark fishing that goes on, and so we have struggled here in a while trying to find something legally that the city could do to give some people some relief to, and bring some fairness to the situation too, and so I think that Audrey has come up with the idea of going ahead and sending this letter out. Counsel, is it okay with you?
I would move, move it forward.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to authorize me to, to send a letter.
And I thank you, Mayor.
And it's, it's my, my pleasure, we'll give it a shot here. Any other questions?
Well, are we asking them to create a rule saying that somebody that lives on the beach can't go out their back door and go fishing? Is that what we're...
No, it's not about fishing, it's about the chumming.
Well, 'cause it says either by adopting a rule to prohibit fishing, or amending the rule to prohibit fish feeding. So I mean, the first part would be...
Yeah.
Well, and again, you would have to treat people fairly, so if you prohibit it for one person, you're gonna, it's the same issue with alcohol on the beach.
So far, so far as what you mean is fishing for sharks, or fishing for trout, or fishing for whatever, that's what you mean?
We can change it to fishing for sharks, if that makes it...
I think we have.
But doesn't it come under fishing and hunting?
It is, but they can make special rules to species or types of fishing, like for example, net ban, and, you know, the, so I mean, the commission could do a lot of different things, so if they wanted to go fishing for sharks...
But just that we can't.
That's correct.
Yeah, and so anyway, does that answer your question? I mean, does that help at all, or? I mean, you know, I'm, 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 I think I can see that Mike's torn about this, I am too, because, but I think that this is one of the consequences, that when we become a little closer together and we become sufficiently more, you know, confined in the places that we work and play together, and where we, we're not a mile away from our nearest neighbor, we are seven and a half feet from our nearest neighbor, and when you go down to the beach, I mean, you go down there and there'll be 10 people in the water, and then some guy just not using good common sense is fishing in between two people. I mean, that's just kind of ignorant, it really is. If people would use better common sense when it comes to that kind of thing, I think there wouldn't be any problems, but I don't really see that Fish and Wildlife's gonna insert themselves into this too far, I don't think that has been what they've done, they have, on certain places, when it comes to fishing piers and stuff, they've obviously said that this is for fishing, no swimming near this area, or when there's a dedicated bathing area, well, they've been able to do that. They have kind of made the chumming in some areas, they, they went after that, so, so I don't, I don't know, I, I think that, I'm a little torn by this, but the people down at the end of the beach anyway, in more in particular, have been really lit up about this whole...
Will there still be areas to fish on the island then?
Yeah, this is, this, I think that, and Audrey, what do you, how do you foresee this playing out? So far as, so far as Fish and Wildlife's ability, if we write a letter that says we're looking for some release, in particular for shark fishing is what we're looking for.
I honestly don't think the commission will react to it.
But even if there is, there has got to be some kind of public process that they go through.
Right, they have hearings, they have a whole process.
So it won't be that they'll just kind of like magically just decide whatever.
Right, and they have public, they, they go around the circuit, they go around the state of Florida seeking comment from different people, so you could go onto the Fish and Wildlife webpage and see if they do have... Okay, I mean, it's a whole separate, I mean, right, the legislature can't do anything with them, I mean, it's a separate governmental arm.
Yeah.
And that's a constitutional arm, and so I can see we're from a lobbying standpoint, it can be very frustrating, but I will tell you, they go around and do a circuit and discuss the issues, and different people from, and that was what happened with the net ban 25 years ago.
Okay, yes, yes, would you like, Carol?
Actually, I'd like for Carol to come up and chat about this a little bit. You know, I obviously would not argue with your attorney about the comment that she just made. I can tell you however that it doesn't preclude us because of the fact that, that with a lobbying contract with you, we not only lobby the legislature, we lobby the executive branch, and we have an opportunity then to interact with, with departments all the time, and so they, they have a legislative affairs director there that, that we will contact, and we have good relationships there, at least we've always have had, to be able to at least have the dialogue.
Now, yeah, go ahead.
If I just may, Audrey, if I remember correctly, a while ago, one of your emails that there are certain sharks that cannot be harvested, and there are certain size requirements to the, I have not heard from anybody that any, that has been violated in any way, and I believe you have not heard that either.
That's correct. We received one complaint, it was a black-tipped shark, and usually sharks, there are certain species, you have to be at least four feet to catch them or harvest them, and a black-tipped you can catch anywhere, nurse sharks you can catch any size.
And Mayor, as you said, chumming is the major issue.
Yeah, I think that that's probably what we should, I don't think that's a fair thing to expect on, on the beach, on, in that area out there, so that's not to say somebody can't pull up on a boat and do the same thing, they probably can, so, so I, I think that we should probably concentrate on that, and that's my opinion, and I mean, people on the beach are, I think a lot of people who live on the beach would like to see fishing all together done away with. I don't, I don't think that's a realistic expectation or anything like that, but I think chumming is one thing that we should definitely go after, but counsel, would that be okay?
Yes.
And, and that way, and if we need to use our lobbyists to go ahead and go see the people of Fish and Wildlife, and, and at least get their, I would like to hear back from them to see how they would actually deal with this, if they have a different way that they could deal with this, that would be great, because all we're trying to do is keep the peace down there between the, the people who don't want to see sharks drug up on the beach right there, and, and think that it attracts sharks and that type of thing, so, anyway. All right, so we're okay, do we have a motion and a second?
Yes, we do.
And go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I think there's, let's face it, there's a delicate balance there for the people that live there, and then the people that live there and like to fish, and then the people that don't live there and want to fish. And I'm a fisherman, but I understand, I think I understand all sides of this, so I think our wording of what we move forward is very important.
Yeah, I think that it's, it's one of those be careful what you ask for kind of things, really, and, and, but I, I don't think that, that, I don't think that's an unrealistic expectation that people shouldn't be chumming for sharks on the beach, on this particular beach, a resident, a really residential area. I don't think that's unrealistic, and so I think if we, if we ask for that, I don't think that's, I don't think any of us have a problem with that, right? You don't have a problem with it, right? Do you? Uh-oh.
No, not really.
Okay, all right. Okay?
We'll make you move over that area.
Okay, so, so are we all done talking about this, or not talking about it, or whatever we're doing? Okay, we'll write your letter, and then at least, we'll, we'll just see how it comes out, and please keep us informed on what you hear back from the Fish and Wildlife on, on what they think about it. If they just kind of blow it off, we'll just let us know right away, but anyway, roll call, please.
Is it as, as is, or is it just the chumming, or what are we?
I'll work with the mayor to make modifications.
We'll, we'll make modify, modifications of the letter to just refer to chumming for right now.
Chumming for sharks.
And, and chumming for sharks, well, it's chumming period, you can't chum for a particular species, you can throw bait in the water. I don't think you can, really. Okay, and, and with that understanding, is that okay? Okay, roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Councilwoman Slata.
Hi.
Mayor Nelson.
Hi.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Longcard.
Hi.
Okay, and let's see, we took that first, and I don't have anything else, but we're going to go ahead and start down here at Stephen for Councilman write-ups.
Thank you very much. Just very quickly, congratulations to the new board members for the Speakers Assembly Southwest Florida, Donna Flomang, Greg Hunter, Gary Israel, Mark Walczek, and Lisa Walsh. The Speakers Assembly is a 20, almost 20-year-old organization here that brings in world-class speakers, and more than that, they bring in our high school kids to allow them to interact with folks who have made their career and helped them understand what careers are. Thanks very much.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything for us today? You good? Good. Janet, what do you have for us?
I don't. Can you believe that?
Yes, I can. I believe anything today. Thank you very much. Mike, you got anything?
Yeah, I had a couple of people bring up the fact our flagpoles down in front of the benchel are very close to the palm trees there, and the flags keep getting into the palms, and, you know, they're just worried about them getting torn up and caught in the trees, and if there's anything we can do about that. Obviously, it's probably hard to move that big concrete structure, but it might be easier to move the trees.
That does happen, we try to keep the trees trimmed back. We'll just try to do a better job of that.
They seem to be right at that same level, and they are awfully close, so.
Yeah. It may be time to replant shorter trees there. You just got to sometimes.
Okay.
Anyway, okay, thanks, Mike. Anything else? All right, Steve?
The only thing I want to say is, Mike, it's good to see you from Channel 2 News, and he went to St. Bonaventure University, my daughter did, so it's a small network of people that keep together, and I just want to say it's good to see you again.
Right, they didn't go to school together at the same time, did they?
Pretty close.
Uh-oh.
Yes, we did.
Anyway, yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Well, speaking of trees, I've heard a lot of good things, and I've heard some not-so-good things, and not really sure where we are or where we aren't, so I've requested that we have the contractors that are doing our citywide trees come in and make a presentation. Haven't heard anything back yet, but are we moving forward with that?
We are checking, checking into the availability of the contractor for the meeting on the 19th. If that's the will of the council, we can, we can arrange to have them come in.
Okay.
Is it, is it a question of design, or...
It's a question of, it looks great, it's a question of trees being planted too close to other trees, so ultimately, they will die. I'm not, and then obviously, what's the delay with the medians, which I see, interestingly enough, have just started the past couple of days, and...
I can address the issue on the medians. The irrigation lines on most of those medians now are just going in, so you should, so you plant things within the next week or two.
Right.
So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, would it be better for, for the architect to come in to explain the positioning of the trees, because he's the one that's...
Yeah, I don't think it's the contractor that we'd be talking about as much as the landscape designer, Chris Buss.
Chris Buss, that's who you're talking about, right?
Perfect, thank you.
And that's who we're checking on the availability with.
Great, fantastic.
Because the contractor's just going, I'm just putting them on...
Right, 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 right. I told the podium, exactly.
And that's exactly what's happening. The landscape architect is literally out in the field pointing at spots, okay? So he's simply directing them to do the actual planting. He's making the decisions.
Isn't it true that we, we actually are, we're, it's a good thing, and most of the time it's a good thing, that we actually were able to get a lot bigger trees for the same value? I mean, a lot bigger, which is great, because usually you have to wait till the canopy grows, you know, for 10 or 15 years to get the real value of it, but we're getting it like in a year. So I think that's, that's probably one of the things, that we're planting mature vegetation, so. Anyway, so that's what it is, a lot. But yeah, that's a good idea. Thanks.
Yeah, that's great, thank you very much.
What else you got?
And then in terms of, you know, we're, we're going to discuss here the skateboard park, and we're going to discuss pickleball, and I guess I'll just throw in, you know, I think we need, in one man's opinion, with two children, I think we need more for children to do in town here, and believe me, I jog by the pickleball players in Benita Bay every morning, and Carl's been down there, and we've gone down there and discussed...
Not playing pickleball.
Right, not playing pickleball, for the record, but, and that's a very popular sport, I'm sure in the various neighborhoods, we all see it, and I think it's increasing in popularity, not decreasing. So something that we can do there in that space, more for children to do, perhaps, I don't know, a water park, something, something more for children to do here, not less for children to do, while trying to find something to do for the pickleballers, so whatever that convoluted statement will look like. Do we, I guess frankly, do we have the space? How we, how are we for space there? And I can visualize the area.
The space for the skate park, where it's at right now?
Yeah, and, you know, I know space is at a premium.
It's, well, it's significant, and we would anticipate bringing back recommendations to council as options to use that space, as well as if the council wanted to continue at least at, to some degree, a skateboard park, perhaps, you know, configured or at least constructed of different material in a different location. We're looking at that. I will remind council that you have already approved, and we are moving forward with plans for a children's aquatic center, which is going to be located right next to the municipal pool. So, I mean, that's, that has already been approved, and we are moving forward with plans on that. So maybe that'll resolve the issue of what to do for children more.
Well, but towards your point, I mean, it's really something for the teens to do, and the little water park isn't for teens, it's, this is for like toddlers, like, and then it...
Well, I think it's going to be a wider range than that. I mean, it's going to be more than just toddlers.
You see Audrey, she's got, she's got teenagers, nope. You're not going to see a 13-year-old boy out there, whee!
She's got, she's got boys in college, okay?
Unless it's, unless they're 100-foot tall slides, we've done those.
All right. But anyway, if council has ideas about additional options we should be looking at, please let us know so that we can kind of put that into the mix as we get ready for our first budget public hearing September 10th.
So, I mean, I, towards Peter's point there is that, is that when is the appropriate time to kind of have that discussion? Is during that, during that time, but to go ahead, and if you have individual ideas, to go ahead and get them to you. Even if it's something in general, like Peter's idea would do, you would be like, I'd like to see something else for, for teens in that area and not lose, lose something, just not be a, a net loss, or even if you're going to replace it for something, I mean, just to articulate that to Carl, even if you don't know specifically what it is. It'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so any ideas you might have, and we'll also tell you, though, that space is at a premium, so we'd have to be very careful about, we may have to end up prioritizing if we run out of space. Well, it's my concern.
Well, and I mean, believe me, this just entered my head, so that's always dangerous to have something just enter and then open my mouth, but with the library, all of a sudden, hearing that it's coming and perhaps moving, we might want to look at that space, but look forward to keeping as many people happy there as we can. It goes back to the, you know, the sports club is there, there's a nucleus there already, and I'd hate to kind of get rid of one nucleus to try to recreate another, but anyway, look forward to...
Well, and I understand that, and just so you know, obviously, the current library site is a county facility. I don't know if they, if they locate downtown, we are, we've got logistic issues, we've got to talk to them about logistics. So I'm not sure if that's going to be a city facility or remain a county facility at this point in time.
Right.
So we may or may not have that option.
Right.
But again, any ideas you have, we want to hear them so we can kind of work them into the option plan.
Right.
Good.
Now, that's great, and then just on a final note, so many of you have know, or maybe you don't know, but Congressman Clausen's mother, Sharique Clausen, passed away recently, and so many of you have reached out, so I just want to say thank you, really, on behalf of the Clausen family, a lot of love, a lot of outreach, and please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. It's a very difficult time, so thank you.
Yeah, I know, I got to tell you, I mean, when I heard that, all I could visualize was Curtin and his mom coming up to that podium together.
Right, right.
And how much he doted over her, it was, got to be just horrible and tough, so please give him our regards and the whole family.
Certainly will.
Okay, and I don't have anything here, so...
To approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Hi.
Councilwoman Slata.
Hi.
Mayor Nelson.
Hi.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Hi.
Councilman Gibson.
Hi.
Councilman Longcard.
Hi.
Councilman McIntosh.
Hi.
Okay, and public comment, anyone wishing to speak on any city item, please come forward.
Hi, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just form a lineup here. Anybody wanting to talk, just come ahead and come and line up.
I think so.
Just, just, Ashley had to leave, she has four little ones at home to put to bed, but I told her to go ahead, that I would take care of everything here. All we really wanted to tell you is that we're very humbled by the support that we've seen tonight, and we really appreciate having an opportunity to continue our partnership. We, we, we like working with the city, we really feel strongly about the issues that you have here, and so thank you very much for showing us the courtesy of continuing that partnership. And we will both be here on the 19th to, to get marching orders as far as things that we have that are going forward. I'm going to be in Tallahassee starting next week, obviously, so we'll start looking at all of those things, and if you'll just send me a copy of the Fish and Wildlife stuff, we can reach out and see who we might be able to talk to about that. But anyway, thank you also very much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Alex Grant, just wanted to reiterate what I mentioned before about Amtrak passenger rail service for this particular area. Once Sun Rail comes to fruition in their construction and operation to Point Sienna Station, which is located on the Polk-Osiola County Line, it's only 35 and a half miles, rail miles, from there to Winston Yard, CSX Yard, where the present rail track goes straight to Lakeland, coming from here. And the rail line from Lakeland to Point Sienna, CSX, Class 1 Railroad, you don't need any improvements at all on that. So you would have a clear track all the way going to the Amtrak Auto Train Station at Sanford, okay, from there. Now, from here to Lakeland, you've got, it's, it's a straight shot, and the rail line is in Class 1 condition for rail from northern, what is it, Hardy County, from the big phosphate mine area in, in Hardy County, that track is in tip-top condition. I believe that CSX is going to be probably getting that tracks in tip-top condition south from Fort Green Springs in Hardy County, all the way to Arcadia, where the interchange with Seminole Gulf is. So because of the new rail regulations for positive train control on main line track. So that's going to be a big improvement there. So the only area of track improvement which has not been done by Seminole Gulf Railway would be whatever sections between Arcadia and here. And there are certain section that's in tip-top shape from Alaco Road all the way to Fort Myers, probably to the Kalusahatchee Bridge. So the cost involved is now coming considerably down for improving the railroad track, and of course, the federal government and state government would match whatever funds would be. This would be a great opportunity for Benita Springs to have passenger rail service in the area, all the way to Washington, DC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Come on, ladies. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Come on up.
We're both residents on Benita Beach, and we were here about the concern about the chumming. And first of all, I think we'd like to say that it's really not just because we're residents down on the beach, we're concerned because we see the families and the children swimming, and we are exposed to it, much more because we are looking out and seeing, and it doesn't have to do with the fishing, it has to do with the safety of the people who are swimming in the water. And one of our concerns, I think, is the defining of the chumming, because we're not sure if a boat takes a line out, and they'll be on the shore, and they put the shark fish in there, or the shark bait, fish bait in there, and then they'll go out a certain distance. They're taking the line out with them, so, and then they're dropping the bait off the end of the boat. I don't think this is necessarily considered chumming, but perhaps it's large, large fish baiting, and we're concerned about that because it's certainly, they go out quite a ways, and then the line is attached, and they come back in. So we have seen more than one shark brought in. And we're not anti-shark, and we're not anti-fishing.
And we know the fish live out there, or the shark's fish live out there, and we're not trying to mess with where they live. It's just, what was I going to say? I forgot.
It's a dangerous area.
It's just, we've seen them cut up stingrays, seen them cut up half a fish, and whether they're standing there, and you can only go so far when you're standing there, but the main issue is the, the boats that go out there. Taking the boats out, getting in their kayaks or their rowboats, and dropping the lines with these big pieces of fish, that is attracting bigger, big fish, big bait, big fish. That's just one of our concerns.
We've seen, maybe they'll be there all night long, attracting and, and fishing for the, for the shark to bring them in. And there's nothing, shark fishing is fine, too, it's just the area that they're doing it in, and the way they're allowed at this point to go about it. It's not actually just casting out your line, it's taking a line out as far as you can that's attached to the bait, or dropping bait into the water. The gentleman with the black, black shark.
The black tip.
Black tip. That wasn't a particularly large shark, no, but we've seen much larger ones brought in.
Yeah, we've seen six foot. And that was at the end of the season, most people were going home, and there was concern, and, but we live here year-round, the majority of people there on the beach are not there, so...